You guys hear each other?
I just unmuted myself.
Hello.
Hi.
Yeah, everybody should be mute. Board members, you're gonna unmute yourselves. Because everyone's entering on mute and they should stay and listen to you guys. John's almost there. Hey Deb.
Hi Carrie.
There you go.
I had all my doors and windows open and a nice gentle breeze was coming in and my neighbor started mowing.
The upside their lawn will look good.
It's Dan. He's practicing for Memorial Day, I guess. Quiet. Why am I on twice again?
It happened last time, too.
I know. I might leave, but I'm gonna try to do it this way. For some reason, when it starts mine, it starts both as Zoom and in Chrome, so it always starts at twice.
Is your default browser Safari or something first and then you're opening it in Chrome also or no?
No, my default browser is Google.
Alright, that's Chrome, so.
Well, yeah, true, but I don't know. I don't say anything. I just click the link and it opens it twice.
It happened during ZBAs, too, so some people, yeah.
I've never seen so many papers in my life.
Here, I'll turn it to my, here's my dining table.
Taking over a chair in my family room. There's, what do you do with those huge plants? Does anybody have a trick?
How does? Keep them in their little envelopes until I need them and then I take them out, you know, the old, old, we don't necessarily need to keep. I always keep, I always keep them for the length of the project and then I, then I scale everything down.
Okay.
One of this project's been four and a half years, so.
Oh dear.
I burn mine when I'm done with them.
You burn them? What?
You burn them?
Bombard.
Good idea.
I'll let my kids trace themselves.
Send them to my daughter. She has five-year-old triplets. Oh, they'll love it.
Oh my god.
I'm here, Deb.
Hi Lance. Oh, hi Lance. Hi Brad.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. Thanks for joining.
Proud.
Hi Allison.
Hi everyone.
Hi Allison.
Hello.
Deborah, did you get the email I sent you with the sound levels?
I did, and I did forward it onto the board. I don't know if everybody got it in time, but.
Okay.
Thank you for that. That was interesting. Still have a few minutes.
Annie, congratulations on taking your position, the president of the, or chairman of the zoning board.
Thank you.
Who's next? Jeff, are you on? Jeff Muller? Maybe not yet. You know, Brad, lately I've seen more of you on this screen than I've seen of you in person in a long time.
I know. Lost my picture.
Alright, we have just about, I'll give it another few seconds and then we'll get started. Looks like we have all of the board members, at least, and most of our other crew. So I'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our virtual planning board meeting. It's Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. For the record, the COVID-19 disease, this meeting is being held remotely and all audio and visual aspects of this meeting are being recorded. At this time, I would like each planning board member to identify themselves and say hello. By now, you should know the drill. So, starting with Barb, please.
I'm Barb Melfelder.
I'm Steve Corusso.
Hi Steve.
Connie Rowe.
Connie?
Yeah.
Hi Dan.
Chuck.
Hi.
Hi John. Okay, I think we also have Allison Phillips, our village attorney, Lance Moore, our building inspector, Jane Johanna, our planning board secretary, Dean Willen, our village trustee liaison, and I know we have Brad Grant. Jeff, are you on from the DPW? Maybe, maybe he doesn't have on mute his phone. Are you just on the phone, Jeff? I'm not sure. Alright, well, we can move on with, until Jeff joins. I just want to make some opening comments. There will not be an opportunity for the public to speak tonight. This is a meeting, our hearing was closed out as of May 11th at 11:59 PM. Anything that we received between the April 27th meeting and actually did accept things that came in before the April 27th meeting, but were too late for, for the, for that meeting that have been included in any record or anything that we've received tonight, so up till tonight. So, that said, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone, thank all the residents and the public that have taken the time and expended a lot of energy doing the research and for their interest in this project. It really does take a bit of a gym. I know myself, I have really been heartened by a lot of this you have all had to say and some of your suggestions. I'd also like to thank the village staff who are sending all these emails, printing all these emails out, are putting the packages together and getting them to us in rapid time, all the while conducting normal. So, thank you all for, for everything that you've done for us, for the village, for the residents, and for this project. So, with that said, Chuck, Stewarts, do you have anything new that you would like to present to us?
Yeah, I don't know how you want to go about, I could either go through the May 4th letter that just highlighted the changes, or I can go through, I think, the most subjects are, and then you guys can provide guidance on some outstanding items. Does that seem reasonable?
That sounds.
Okay, so, the first page on the, the title page, T1, we split the stone for brick. We also relocated the conveyor that was on the creek side rear to the, on the, on the back near Carol's house, to the side near the creek. We also, which we'll get into in the proposed site plan, relocated the dumpster. We did some dressing up. We bracketed around the columns, added some dental work or, you know, fixture work to the peaks of the dormer and the gable. This roofline, as we see it, is compliant, which we indicated in the May 15th letter with 35520, the village code. So, this is a roofline we feel comfortable with and think we should stay. That section of the code also references including dormers and porches, both of which we have. When we go on to.
Someone's got some music in the background. Could you pu, please mute your mics if you're not speaking? Could the host please mute everybody's mic? Thank you.
Um, so, when we relocate the dumpster, which was in the proximity here, we're able to move the retaining wall closer to the building. That gives, at the Helderberg Ave side, a minimum of six feet and toward the creek side of the property, a maximum of 16 feet between the fat at Carol's and the proposed retaining wall. And again, remember that retaining wall will vary from three to four feet and will have an eight-foot fence atop of it. At the last meeting, we'll get to in the landscape plan, we had discussed going to all arbividee in this area, and one of the things I had included in the letter on Friday, the 15th, is now with more room as you approach the creek, if you want to vary the species of tree, that is definitely something we're willing to do. Other than that, the next most substantial change would be on the photometric plan. I'm just scrolling through quickly. This is the grading plan that has a cross-section stormwater management. Again, the landscape plan has the arbividee, the protected DOT right-of-way has been delineated. And then here with the photometric plan, by relocating the dumpster and its associated light, you get to zero candles at the property line. And again, lighting plan that we think is compliant. What's, we didn't receive guidance on from the board at the last meeting and was discussed in, I believe, the Barton and La Judas letter, or one of the public comment letters, was the selection of a decorative fixture on the northern side of the Helderberg driveway. That's something that Stewarts is willing to do, but was not discussed at the last meeting. And with that, I mean, the other changes, I think were, you know, mostly technical in nature, but at this, you know, be willing to entertain any questions the board has on either the plans or the response letter, May 15th or May 4th.
Okay, um, for my board members, do you have anything at this time for Chuck? Any questions? I know that for myself, seeing the brick as opposed to the stone was a little bit of a eye-opener. But, that being said, you know, I'd like to hear everybody else's opinion on not only that, but any other features that we might want to discuss.
What was an eye-opener to you, Deb?
To me, the eye-opener, one of the eye-openers, just, you know, to try to get things started here, was the brick as opposed to the cultured stone. I'm not really sure where that came from, but, you know, just my opinion, I want everybody else to speak first, but just my opinion, I think that the cultured stone is a little bit more in keeping with character than the brick. That's, that's just my opinion. Some people like blue, some people like black, so that's why we're all here. Dan, did you have something you wanted to say about the landscape plan?
Well, I was gonna ask about the light fixtures, and comment about the landscaping, but first, for the light fixture that Chuck just mentioned on Helderberg Ave, wouldn't that be better to match the existing light fixtures at the intersection of Altamont Boulevard and Main Street, so that it's in keeping with the historic character? Is that what you were referring to, Chuck?
Yeah, we, um, there's one there now. Can you still see my screen or no?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, I can't get the little Google guy to, there we go. So, there's, I mean, that fixture is in the DOT right-of-way. And our light fixture would be proposed on the southern side of this driveway. So, our light fixture is here. That light fixture is, you know, approximately here. I mean, I could look to source that light and replace it with, with this light. I think that those lights are a little bit darker than, than our lights, but if, you know, you want it in, that's our, this side of the, the line is our property, and the other side of the line is DOT. So, I know that, you know, I don't want to commit to putting one on their property in likelihood of needing a UNO, but I could put it on the Stewart's side of the driveway.
Well, I'm commenting, as far as just a board member, I mean, I'm DOT, I retired two and a half weeks ago, so I'm not speaking on behalf of DOT. I'm just saying any light fixture that's along Helderberg Ave or Altamont Boulevard, regardless of whether it's on your property or DOT, if it matched the light fixtures that the historic period lighting that's on DOT right-of-way would just help with the character, and it really doesn't matter who owns it.
The only thing to remember, the only thing to remember, the lights in the new lighting plan for the village, I don't know that the lights, the light fixtures and the lights themselves won't be changing with that. Now, that might be a year or two down the line, but it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
So, the village is changing their lights?
National Grid, yes, is proposing the LED lights at, I think it's 3,200 or 3,000. So, the light fixtures themselves, I believe, will have to change to incorporate the new lights. You know, I'm just, I'm just saying this from memory from one of the village board meetings. I might be totally off base, so if somebody else, Brad or Lance, knows that any different with that, please feel free to speak up, or even Dean. But I know at some point those lights.
It's the streetlights and it's a wider light, does not require anywhere near as much power, or is quite a bit of energy savings.
Will the fixtures themselves be changing?
Debbie, the fixtures are going, possibly change.
Oh, oh, thank you, Carrie. There you go. Just, just something, you know, before we go, and not that I don't agree, Dan, I think that absolutely would make sense. But, before we go doing that, maybe we could get clarification as to whether they're changing or if they change what they might be before we make that leap.
Yeah, that's a good point. I wasn't aware that they would change. So, um, alright, I had other comments on the landscape plan, if you want to go over those. I will put them in writing, Chuck, so Deb could forward them, just so you have them. I mean, it's, thanks for revising the plan based on the comments from the hearing. In my opinion, starting with the Broadmore Junipers proposed behind a sidewalk where you're cutting off the driveway access along Altamont Boulevard. I know that was brought up at the last meeting during the hearing. People commented on that. It appears that there's only about 30 inches in that's, in the width behind the curb and then the, the back edge of the concrete section. That's very little room to maintain shrubs, to establish and maintain them. Personally, I think you're gonna have a hard time establishing and maintaining the junipers there. And just based on the amount of gravel that's behind the curb and under the sidewalk, you have a little limited soil space in that area. Personally, I think the junipers aren't gonna make it, and I didn't agree with a comment at the last meeting either. I, I think it would be better as, just continue with the textured concrete that matches what's out there now. Because the junipers, even though they're salt-tolerant, they're just not, I don't think they're gonna make it in that area, so it would look worse with them dying in that area. Over to the east side, the additional plantings, the red twig, the red twig dogwood are good. I think it would help to put a few more dogwood adjacent to and behind the dumpster and a propane exchange facility there. It would help soften the edges of those, because they're gonna look very prominent where they are, just out in the middle of nowhere, so some dogwoods behind or between them, around them would help. The back corner, the east corner there, between the oak and the white vinyl fence, there hasn't been much discussion on the view of the Stewart's building from the property owners to the east-southeast there. And it's hard to tell now from the plan, I know you've maintained a few, you retained a few of the deciduous trees that are, that are out there. It's hard to visualize those on the plan, but in the area where you have shown lawn, it may help to put in an evergreen or two in that corner off the end of the fence, if you have the room with the existing trees to help with the views, screen of views from the southeast corner down there.
Well, while we're talking about, while we're talking about the, the fence and the view kind of from the southeast corner, one of the comments that appeared in both of Brad's letters, and one of the areas I needed some guidance on was the, the fence itself. Right now, obviously, there's a cedar fence there that I would say, which is in better-than-average condition, probably than a, for a fence of its age. Does the board want to maintain the cedar fence, or does the board want to switch to the vinyl fence? Or does the board want to switch to the vinyl fence? And the only reason I ask is, obviously, to develop a compliant plan. But also, it changes the view as the, the kind of the starkness of the white. So that is one of the things I do need some guidance on. And while we're talking about the view from the southeast, I think it would be appropriate to maybe have that conversation now.
Does the, the white wood be bright? Was, does the fence, the vinyl have to be a white?
Good question. You mean, get it be like a tan or a brown or a whatever other color?
Yeah, just something toned down a little bit. And I think any fence along that side, the east side, if it matched what you're putting behind the building, it would look better if it were all the same. But you're right, it's going to be pretty bright and stark if it's white vinyl along there where the, now the cedar fence isn't as noticeable, but can you change the color of the vinyl?
Who is that?
I was going to say, it's also a matter of showing dirt to the cedar fences, somewhat forgiving and a natural tone, whereas a colored plastic fence material, every raindrop is going to stir up some dirt and it's going to be dirty on the bottom side in all likelihood. That's all under trees and they all drip down.
Now, Chuck, you said that was an existing cedar fence?
Correct.
How, do you know how old the fence is and who would maintain? Yeah, that's, I know. So whose fence is that and who would maintain it or be responsible for replacing it if we kept that?
Stewart's. Yeah.
I don't think we could keep that fence. I, I was there yesterday kind of crawling around and I, it's not in good shape.
Could someone who's ever on, not on mute, mute, please? We're hearing phones ringing in the background. Thank you. Go ahead, Barb.
I was just going to say, I was crawling around there yesterday, just checking out the whole thing. And that fence is, I think, has seen better days. And I think wood would be prettier, but I think that fence has to be replaced. I agree that the, the plastic, I have an aversion to plastic. But, you know, maybe there's another alternative. I know nothing about fences. But maybe someone else has an idea.
Any other board member?
Well, if any fence is replaced, can it just be cedar and can the fence behind the building be matching as well?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Just one of the things that I had done some, so yes, it can be cedar. And yes, the fence behind the, the store can match it.
I would think it would be better to be cedar throughout, you know, both behind the building and along the creek there.
Right.
Connie, John, anybody else? Steve?
Yeah.
Cedar as well.
That would be better. And have it matched.
Can you hear me?
I think Connie was breaking up.
Yeah, I think we have difficulty with the internet connection. Yeah, you break it up a little bit, but go ahead. Everybody else go on mute. That's what's causing the interference.
I was going to suggest exactly what Dan said. I like the idea of the cedar fence, but put in new fence along the creek and have it be cedar fence back by the back of the building as well.
All right, good. Steve?
Deb, can you hear me?
Who is that? Steve? Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
Okay, I also think that the cedar would look, kind of match a lot better than, than the, the brightness of the white plastic fence. And to be able to run and agree, I, I agree wholeheartedly with that. I think it would really match a lot better. Might take a little more maintenance to upkeep, but the long term, I think it would look much better.
Thanks, Steve. John?
I have a question, not on the fence, I have a question on the the side.
Stay on the fence, stay on the fence, John. John?
Say it again.
Stay on the fence a second. Let's, let's get one thing at least straight here. Do you agree that the cedar fence all the way around would be the way to go?
Last longer, yes.
Okay, all right. So, and I'll let you speak in one second, John. I just want to make sure that we get one thing at a time collaborated here. So I think Chuck, we're all saying that a cedar fence, new fence to replace the existing fence, and then a cedar fence along the back of the building as well would be the way to go as opposed to the white vinyl or any vinyl. Now, along that line, if we do that, what do we want to, would it be feasible to also do something with the enclosure for the dumpster?
Yeah, um, yeah, one of the comments was to mimic kind of the Latham enclosure and do like a Yeah, so I don't like the, the, I don't like the full masonry, those look like pretty, those look pretty beefy. But what I think would look nice is depending upon what stone you go with, whether it's the, the brick at the building veneer or the, the, the cultured stone, to do the hardy board to match the building, because it is going to be out front now.
Yep, I like that. Whoever sent that in, that picture of the Latham, yeah, that, that looked really nice. With this cultured stone.
Um, and to, to, not to complicate or go backwards, and I'm sure you're going to get to it. But one of the things with the brick, you can change the color of the brick and go with a lighter tone brick if you want to go away from the stone. If you want to keep the stone, that's, that's fine on, on my end as well. That is a, you know, somewhat of a, a board decision. But we, we're fine with a, a brick, a brick of a different color or, or stone. So, but I will change the dumpster to match the building.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, John, you were going to say something before I, before I steered toward the fence.
I had a question on the side of the building where the, the condenser are and the entrance, entrance door. When you look at the elevation, it does not look like it's 18 feet extension. And that roof is going to go into the 25, 26 parking lot, isn't it, Chuck?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand the question.
Okay, on the the southwest side of the building.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, let's go the other end then. I thought that was the north. Right there. Where you have the ice chest and the electrical information, you also have a roof coming off there. And when you look at the elevation, it does not look like it is, extends out as far as it does. But when you, when you measure it, it's approximately 18 feet out, almost into parking lot 26.
No, the roof overhang would be this, this kind of line right through here.
Well, then the plans are not to scale like they say they are. Your one inch equals 20, it comes out about 15 feet. So it's not going to come out into the parking lot, you know, maybe that's something you want to look at and change it next time you, you send them in.
Yeah, my, my sheet has about a six foot overhang.
And the proposed site plan, what is looks like there are two, two pole bases or foundation bases right on the parking lot line of 26. What am I looking at then, Chuck?
That's drainage.
Oh, that's not, that's not the roof overhang, that's my pointer. Yep, I see that now.
Yeah, that's, that's
The catch basin?
Where the, well, that's where the roof drain ties into the stormwater system.
Okay, I see it. Now that's better now, okay. I have a question on your, one of your response to Barton Le Judas, where they say, they recommend the lighting should not be brighter than the surrounding street area, tone down the outside lighting a bit, should not be brighter than the streetlights. And you say that your proposed lights are sourced as special order and cannot be sourced. Why can't you have lower streetlights? What's so unique about that? And you, you can't?
Well, we went to our vendor, so again, there's, there's two different pieces to the lights, right? One is the, the temperature of the light and then one is the, the foot candle. So in regards to the, the temperature, there's a request at the last meeting for us to go to approximately 3,000 Kelvin, which is a yellow hue light. We went to our supplier and they don't make that light. So the 4,000 Kelvin is a special order light. And because our lighting is compliant, we don't see the reason we should have to lower the foot candles, particularly because you have a, an activity that requires, you know, somewhat warm light. I mean, you know, you want white light under the gasoline canopy, particularly as people are using the fuel dispensing. So we tried to go to a 3,500 or something in that range to, to make the accommodation. We cannot source the light and because our lights are compliant, we don't think that we have to go any further.
Could you use another vendor?
No, I mean, we really do try to maintain the same fixtures. If we could replace the, the, the bulbs with the, the light that would, you know, make it a warmer or a lower Kelvin light. We look to do that, but we, we couldn't. So we do like to maintain the same fixtures throughout the company. As you can imagine, you know, if a light breaks or, you know, we want to be able to fix it somewhat immediately and not have additional special order equipment, as it is, the bulbs and the LEDs are special order.
Brad, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I got a, as far as the photometric plan, Chuck is right, there's minimal light spillage off the site that's usually and typically zero. But the nature of my comment was, and I wasn't at that April 27th meeting for the Kelvin conversation. But from a simple lay point, if I'm walking up the street from lower in the village and I'm at the railroad tracks and I'm looking up at Stewart's, how white a light? What does it look like in comparison to the existing lighting? And, you know, that goes to kind of the hue of the lighting, is it brilliant white or? Who, at some point in the enterprise, I had saw someone did an aerial of a model of a nighttime lighting at the Stewart's site as proposed. I'm not sure if the consultant who did the photometric plan did that, Chuck, do you know who did that?
Yeah, we had a consultant for the photometric plan do that.
Can that same consultant do a, a person sized view from the railroad tracks using the same type of technology? So we have a, you know, cut sheets aside, what's it going to look like? That's my question.
I mean, my, my response is going to be the same, I mean, those, those lights are, hold on one second, let me just see if I could find the, find the file instead of everyone looking at my folder index.
Now, one thing to remember too, again, getting back to National Grid and the Village of Altamont, changing over our lighting, our lighting, our, our village streetlights will also be changing. So what that's changing to? I don't know, I think from the last meeting, again, I'm trying to remember the last meeting that it was talked about. It was like 3,000 or 3,500 or 31, but so, I don't know, you know, it's kind of like an HDTV. The, the naked eye may not see the difference. However, would the neighborhood that's looking at it all the time see, see the difference? You know, that, that's my concern. That, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, so, so this plan, the plan I have in front of you is the plan that was used at the zoning board. Obviously, it has not been modified because in the, the plan you see here, the dumpster is still in the, the back corner. So, so the light effectively along the, the edge of the building has been eliminated. So your, your intensity is going to be under the canopy and in, and in front.
Could we do something to shield the lighting around there?
Again, well, there's already, if you look at the, if you look at the photometric plan, some of the lights are already back shielded lights.
Okay.
So the, the inventory, so the, the blue lights or the, the lights with the, the blue legend, so the one around the dumpster, the one at the Altamont Boulevard driveway are, I believe, back shielded lights.
It seems like everybody's concerned though, or the bright light to the pump, is that pretty much everybody's thought under the canopy?
Is it just the?
Say that kind of again, Connie?
Is it just the, the lights under the pump that are going to be the 4,000? Or is it all of the, the pole lights in the property?
No, all, all the lights would be the, the 4,000 Kelvin. You know, the exception of if we switch to the, if we switch to the decorative fixtures that match the one on the corner of Altamont and Main, or Altamont and Hildeberg. So if you So if you switch, if you switch the perimeter lights, you would, you would change effectively two fixtures out. And you would get the decorative fixtures. And then the, the rest would be And you would get the decorative fixtures, and then the, the rest would be, you know, the Stewart's lights.
Sorry, to, to interject a bit, I think the, the relevant provisions of the zoning code that currently set out the lighting requirements that we are compliant with, they seem to be focused, I mean, there's a, there's a list of things, but they all seem to be basically focused on preventing, you know, glare, like a blinding glare to motorists and others. And, you know, we don't really think that the lighting plan that we've submitted demonstrates there'd be any sort of concern in that way. And we certainly don't think that it would create an issue for roadway traffic or for, you know, folks driving across our parking lot. What it does however is provide sufficient lamp for people that, you know, at night are getting out of their cars, fumbling with their wallets, lacking gas and the like. Is there, I guess what we're trying to get a sense of is, is there real concern over, you know, there being any sort of glare into the roadway or elsewhere?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it's, for me, for my concern, it was, it was more the neighborhood, whether or not there would be flare that's going into someone's bedroom window or, or whatever. And that's why I was asking, you're, you're absolutely right Leah, that, that's, that's one of the reasons I was asking is, you know, there's preventative measures perhaps that we can do, as opposed to changing out all the lights. I'm just kind of throwing out some ideas.
If you go back to, to looking at this plan, this plan shows that essentially at the property boundaries, the light is gone, as the, the photometric plan, you know, would say the same. So what, what I was saying is if you change the fixture to a decorative fixture at the, the two driveways, now you have just the operational lights of Stewart's that are, you know, the four thousand Kelvin unshielded, because the decorative fixtures are fully gloved. And our canopy lights and our building lights are all, you know, flush mounted sofas. And I think you'd be down to essentially just the one pole light near the, near the dumpster.
Chuck, can you give me?
Is there a pass?
Some of the.
Please, Connie, were you trying to say something there?
Yeah, I was too, sorry.
I'd like to have a name of a, a couple of Stewart's stores that use the four thousand Kelvin. So at night I can go and see what it looks like, because just to say it's going to look like this or look like that, like Brad said, when you're walking up from the railroad tracks, I don't want it to look like a big Christmas tree out in the middle of nowhere and have it be bright. I'd like to see what the four thousand Kelvin looks like.
Where we did the, the most prominent installation of our, of these lights are at the corner of Route one forty seven and Route sixty seven in the town of Charlton. In that proximity, Stewart's is located on the southeast corner. At the northwest corner is a historically registered graveyard. And on the southwest corner is a historically registered church. And in that instance, our lights were the same mech, in the same lighting scheme as proposed here. And again, something that met compliance, so that would be the, the best installation to look at.
Where's located Chuck, what's, what city?
It's the town of Charlton, and it's the corner of Roots one forty seven and sixty seven.
Okay, thank you.
Connie?
So, I guess I had a couple of questions about, you know, what lights will be on? Well, first of all, what are your hours of operation and what lights would still be on when you're closed? And then the second part would be, is there possibly that lights could be dimmed before or after certain hours? So that it wasn't so bright. I know some, some places have that where things will dim down when it gets late or if it's very, very early.
Um, so a couple of answers, one, the hours of operation are, are about five AM to eleven, but I'll confirm, you know, my next submission. The lights are both on a timer and a photocell. So let's say you have an instance where, you know, a storm comes in and it gets dark, the photocell would trigger the lights to come on. Otherwise, they're on a preset timer for on and off. The lights would remain on as long as the store was open and operating. And then all lights, with the exception of some internal emergency light, would go dark when the store was closed. And, and that's it, the delivery door light would effectively be the only light that comes on off those hours. And that is that, that's so that someone who's opening the store or closing the store, you know, enters and exits with, with light for safety purposes.
Can that be a motion sensor Chuck?
Right.
We don't, I mean, the, we don't do motion sensors, we do the, the, the timer. And again, I mean, you know, in that proximity, you have a, a finished floor elevation of, you know, four seventy, and you have a, a light that's at approximately four, you know, seventy eight, and you have fences on both sides.
So, so to answer Connie's question, after the store has closed and everyone is out, all the exterior lights, with the exception of perhaps a, the secure, a security light?
Yeah, except for the, the, the light over the delivery door, which is effectively shielded by fences on both sides, is the only light that remains on for approximately a half hour.
Okay, all right. That, that sort of makes a difference, at least in my mind.
But I would agree with Brad and John about the, the, the sense of, this is a very pedestrian oriented village, when people are walking through town as they're walking up from Maple Avenue to the railroad and, you know, does, does, do those bright four thousand Kelvin lights stand out? And make the Stewart's much, much brighter than the surrounding area? I, I think that's the concern we've been hearing about.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the lights at the current store are LED. If I, if I, if memory serves me and the picture's accurate, I mean, the lights at the current store are LED in the same range, I mean, it's going to be, you know, effectively no different.
So they're four thousand Kelvin too?
There is one exception to that. The canopy, as it currently exists up there, has two small LED lights. As far as Stewart's canopy goes, it probably has the lowest lighting in a four county area at least, so that's going to get brighter. But as Chuck says, they are downcast and underneath the canopy. If there were some changes at those two streetlights, one at each entrance, that would soften it up quite a bit.
Yeah, and your, your canopy light is the light you can have the least control over because the light bounces between the white concrete and, you know, the, the lights are fixed at approximately fourteen feet, six inches. I mean, there's no, you know, it's not absorbed by asphalt as it is in other places. And really just bounces back and forth. You know, I'm very reluctant and, and almost to the point where I'm, I'm, you know, not willing to change the, the canopy lights and, and the lights throughout the facility, and instead change the perimeter lights to, you know, to, to soften those levels of intensity. And again, what that would do is in, in this vicinity here at the driveway and this vicinity here at the driveway, it would lower those, it would lower those, those intensities of green.
And with a better looking fixture.
Yeah, one that matches what's there now, correct.
So then, what happens if what's there now changes? Who would, I mean, would we just leave those two? Or would we try to get National Grid or someone to change it? I mean, you know, I agree with, with what we're saying, I, I think that's a good idea. And if the rest of the board agrees with that, and, you know, I have no problem with it. I, I just wonder if National Grid or when we change our lights out in the village, will that then be an eyesore? Just throwing every opportunity to ask questions out there.
Well, as long as the light fixtures are complement the building itself, whether they match the existing ones now or if the ones on the Main Street and Maple and all that change out to something else, as long as the one Stewart's puts in on their property complement the building, they should be fine.
Yeah, and I would just, I would go to match the light that's there, that, I think it's like an acorn shaped lighter or something. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll give you guys another, I'll give you guys another light. And I'll try and get the lighting, the photometric plan to display, not in the foot candle measurements, but in the, in the color scheme that, you know, that I just displayed.
And the lighting under the canopy is recessed, you said Chuck?
Yeah, all lights are flush mounted lights, so with the exception of the yard lights, everything is a flush mounted soffit fixture or flush mounted canopy fixture.
So it's not like we're going to walk up Main Street and, you know, spotlight will be in our eyes? That glare will be cut down significantly, significantly by being recessed like that?
Correct, I mean, I'm not going to convince you that, and again, that, that one forty seven and sixty seven, you know, when you drive through there and it's in a rural area, I'm not going to tell you that it's not, not bright. Because when you look from darkness into light, it, it's bright, that's what light is, you know, supposed to do. But it doesn't spill, and that's the primary function of the, the LED fixture.
Yeah, that was kind of where I was coming from. I'm really not concerned about glare into the motorists' eyes. These are downcast, it's what does it look like when you're coming from downstreet and looking at it? Is it a, a light island or, you know, softening up those two streetlights, does that take away a lot of this thing? It doesn't really spill out off the property, but you see it, it's a visual thing. Guys, or Chuck, can the people that modeled the aerial do a street view? Knowing what they know?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know.
That would help.
Well, I mean, we can certainly keep, I, I, I think, I think at this point, we're all in agreement that the two decorative lights, as opposed to the normal streetlights that they were going to have there, would be a preferred option. And, you know, again, with our lights in the village changing to probably three thousand or thirty one hundred, I'm not sure to the naked eye it would be that visible. And again, you know, they're complying with our code, and as much as I would like to see it changed, I don't know, I, I, I think they're mitigating it whatever way they can. But if, if Chuck, you could get that, that photometric reading or picture from the guys that did the one from above, that, that would help. Whether it would change anything or not, I don't know. There's really, at this point, I'm not sure there's a, a choice in the lighting that can be used if we have them go by our code.
Deb, just, I, I just looked this up, but I, I just want to make sure everyone kind of understands what we're talking about. I, this is on, on my screen now, the three thousand K is, is the light that I'm kind of hovering over. And the four thousand is the light that I'm hovering over now. What we had originally proposed was fifty seven hundred, which skips effectively to, to like almost a stark white light. So again, we're, we're heading into the yellow hue, just not, not quite a, a yellow light. So if that, if everyone understands what we're talking about, I, I think this is probably one of the more difficult topics for myself and, and boards to, you know, kind of relate, because people just think bright or not bright, but it's, it's warmth versus cold, I guess you'd say. Are you all right with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it, and you know, I, I think the other thing that, and this is something we've got to get to or at least discuss so that we can take it and think about it, is the color of the building, I think, will reflect how much light is being cast off. If we have a bright white building, just like if we had the bright white vinyl fence, that's going to give entirely different effect than if we had maybe a more muted color on the building and the stone or brick, whatever we go with.
Yeah, if that's the, the topic you'd like to, to take up next, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So did you want to, did you want to finish the landscaping first that we kind of got sidetracked from?
Yes.
Sure.
Trying to keep everybody on one track is like trying to keep three trains on one track, but, but yeah, Dan, why don't you go ahead?
If you want to jump back to that Chuck, if you could put the landscape plan back up, it'd be helpful.
Yep.
Like I was saying, in that back corner, you know, now, if you go with the cedar fence, that would be better. That back corner, it, from what I noticed looking at the site, nobody's paying attention to the properties to the east. And I think, depending on where the existing vegetation that you've retained is, you know, because that's not shown on the, on the proposed site plan, possibly an, an evergreen or two, whether it's a, a Doug fir or spruce or something. Could be, a couple could be put back in that corner to help, would help with the lighting too, but also help with the view there. And the last comment I had have to do with the hot topic last time was everything to the south towards Carol's property. And I saw you changed everything to Arbor Vity that was commented on before. The, personally, I think there's problems with just the way the, the trees are shown. First, I, I don't think planting five to six foot high evergreens, whether they were the Austrian pines or the Arbor Vity, are going to do anything for a number of years because the fence is already eight foot high. So to put a five foot or a six foot tree in front, it's going to take a few years just for the tree to get as high as the fence. So the fence is already going to screen the view from anybody on Carol's property, because the average site, the, the height for site is five foot. So no one's going to see the, the, most of the Stewart's building anyway, regardless of if there's any vegetation or not. One thing, I know the zoning board said vegetation for screening, but also for noise. Vegetation does nothing for noise unless it's hundreds of yards deep of very dense forest. So you could plant as many trees as you want, you'll do nothing for noise in that area, so it's strictly a visual concern. I think the proposing, the proposal of Arbor Vity, which shows slightly less than fifteen feet on center, is going to look like a picket fence rather than any type of hedge or screening for years till the Arbor Vity got big enough. I, I mentioned quite a while ago about, I think, a mixture of, you know, evergreen and deciduous, or even a couple of deciduous. evergreen and deciduous, or even a couple of deciduous trees would be far more effective than just putting a line of evergreens. And to put vegetation like Arborvitae's or even Austrians between the vinyl fence or the cedar fence now, and the existing property line, which has a hedge now, which I assume is the property line. There's a chain link fence.
Yeah, that is, that is the property line.
That's the property line. So if you put in evergreens in there, it's going to be difficult for anybody to get in and mow the lawn area between there. If it's four to six feet, once the trees get big enough. And with the existing vegetation on Carol's property, she has a large Norway spruce that already screens a lot of her view of the building anyway. So it almost seems like a couple of trees, a couple of deciduous trees, like the oaks you have shown on the east side of the property, the three to three and a half inch caliber tree is going to be 14 to 16 feet high. So the canopy of the tree is going to be above the fence. So at least seasonally, it provides some screening. So it almost seems like a couple, you know, just possibly towards the west side of the fence and depending on what's retained in the back on the east side. That are lined up along there. Considering the existing vegetation on Carol's property. And I don't know if you've approached Carol, but planting, strategically planting a tree or two might be far more effective than putting something right up against the fence if she were willing to provide you access to the, to plant a tree.
Dan, can we talk about the Norway spruce? I know Carol's got some concerns about plantings interfering or the wall or the fence or all of the above doing any damage to her Norway spruce. Have you seen those emails?
I saw them and she asked for me to go look at and give my professional opinion. And as I said, I'm not going to provide a separate independent opinion to her. Because I don't want conflict of interest, either with my participation on this board or my current or future job in two weeks. So, but then I don't understand where the concern would be because it appears that the retaining wall and the fence are going to be located where the existing building is that's coming down. So if that building has any type, I don't know what's underneath, whether it's just a foundation or crawl space or a full basement, the root system of the spruce or any of the other vegetation doesn't extend under the house. The house is to be demolished. So if there's any excavation in and around that area or fill, it's not going, it can't possibly affect the root system of the tree that the roots aren't there. You know, where the basement is, if there's a, is there a basement under that building or?
Yes, there's a full basement.
Full basement. So any work in that area, that existing house, how could you possibly affect the trees if there's a full basement underneath it? Most root systems of trees are within the top 18 to 24 inches of the surface. So putting in a post for a fence shouldn't be a problem and the retaining wall shouldn't be that big a deal.
Yeah, I read.
Sorry, Chuck, go ahead.
No, 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 I read the letter from Jack Maggie, Maggie.
Yeah.
It was very, it was very much in line with what the construction methods would have been anyway. You know, all equipment on the Stewart's side of the property, excavation and demolition to occur from that side of the property. So I don't think that we would have a problem complying with the recommendations as he outlined them.
Okay. And Dan, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot as an expert for Carol. Depending on you as an expert for us so that, you know, we're at least trying to mitigate any damage to any property.
Right. And also, and I would defer to Allison, not to put her on the spot, but I, from my experience, when you affect vegetation on your own property, when the veg, you know, whether it's trees or shrubs that are off your property, it's my understanding you can do what you want on your property. You know, like if you were to take off a limb on a tree, but the tree's not on your property. If it extends over the property line, you can do what you'd like. But that's a legal issue. But I don't think that's the concern here. My comments are more about, you know, an eight foot fence going up, and I think cedar would be much better than white vinyl. Putting any plantings in would, like I said, evergreens, it would take a number of years before they got high enough to be effective, but the fence is already higher than the average person's eyesight. So all it's going to do is block the skyline, the sky, not, not a view of the building.
Again, and again, just remember that the fence, the top of the fence is approximately 11 to 12 feet taller than the finished floor of the store. Because the retaining, the fence sits atop the retaining wall and the retaining wall is three to four feet. So you're in like the 482 range for top of fence.
Yeah, so that's why I think a few deciduous trees might be better to provide that canopy, you know, that's higher than the fence. If that's what Carol's interested in. And that, like I said, they could be strategically placed where they don't, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be up against the fence to be effective.
And that, and that was my.
Underneath her Carol's evergreen there, there is a limitation as far as canopy height. So you wouldn't want to plant a real big tree in close proximity. What Dan said earlier, going out beyond that towards the stream or to the west, you don't have those issues.
Right. I wouldn't recommend any plantings that are in the vicinity of that existing spruce.
Right.
And I was just trying to, in my letter, I indicated, we did it because that's what we discussed, but we're willing to change it because the separation to the, from, from the, from her fence to the retaining wall fence has changed.
Right.
Right.
We'll change it again.
What, what does everybody think, from the board's perspective? Dan, suggestions of some deciduous and evergreen? Or evergreen with the Arborvitae, the way it was on the plan? What does everyone think? I mean, we don't have to make all these decisions tonight, just have these things in the back of your mind to think about. So that Stewart's has some direction if and when we get to that point.
I think having both would be a good idea. I think having a deciduous tree or two would soften also kind of just the view. And, you know, there's some pretty trees, you know, that get some pretty maples or something that'll change color. But then a couple, you could put in two or three evergreens. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Barb. Anybody else? Connie, John, Steve?
I would, I would defer to Dan's expertise, but I do agree with Barb that, you know, softening, having a mix and the row of Arborvitae, it might as well just be a fence. So we're already putting up a fence, so. That's my thoughts.
No?
Deb, Steve?
Steve, go ahead, Steve.
I would certainly defer to Dan because to be perfectly honest, he's a heck of a lot more of a expert in that area than I am. And, you know, obviously, I do think that the Arborvitae's would make a road looking thing, like more like a fence area. So I'm going to defer everything over to Dan and I would wholeheartedly agree with his recommendations.
Do you, Steve? Mr. Yuki, do you have anything for us? I'm mute.
Not on the, not on the trees. I don't, I have a question on site work once you get off the trees and the fence.
Okay. No pun intended.
Right.
This is, Connie, I do have a question. It's not exactly the landscaping, but it's in that general area. Somebody mentioned it, the propane exchange. And I didn't know if that was in compliance. I thought outdoor storage of any stock had to be within four feet of the building perimeter, not across the parking lot.
That's, that's news to me. Do you know the section?
Yeah, 35538. F2, outdoor storage of any stock or other material or outdoor display or sale of goods shall be prohibited unless stored or displayed within four feet of the building perimeter.
So 38, what was the, oh, F?
F, F2. I believe. That's what I have on my notes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. So we will move that.
Okay, where are we thinking to move it to?
It would probably have to move against the building.
Well, it would have to be accessible, right, to the, to cars, to traffic.
No, that's, those are propane tank exchanges. That's not any element of the gasoline filling.
No, no, I know it. But how are you going to get the propane tanks in and out for the trucks, you know, to deliver the propane?
Yeah, I think we would have to put them on this, you know, the side of the building here, so that they're within four feet.
We're not, we're not seeing.
What side of the building?
We're not seeing your drawing here, Chuck. The Alton Boulevard side, I guess it's probably the best.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't want to put, I don't think that they belong in the, kind of the pittuck area we're trying to establish. But I'll see where they end up. I mean, you know, most likely the electric cabinet shifts down and maybe the condenser compressor, you know, kind of every, the ice chest and everything moves south. And then they end up on the corner there.
So then are you moving that again more toward Carol's?
Yep.
So you're shifting everything down and moving it more toward Carol?
Well, it's, I mean, it's really only the, the one compressor condenser that we moved from the south side. It still stays on the east side of the building. But just moves down, you know, eight feet.
And you're putting the propane tanks next to the electrical box?
No, I'm saying from, take, take the ice chest and the, and all of this and basically just slide everything down so that you can move the propane into the corner here. I mean, you're not going to put it in front of the windows. So I'd imagine it has to go on that edge of the building right there.
Debbie, question?
Go ahead, John.
That's, that comment about the storage within four feet is under a convenience store. It's been determined by the zoning board, this is a gas station. Does it make a difference? It doesn't have any such comment like that under a gas station.
Good point. Very good point.
That's an excellent point, actually, and that's just a good one.
The way I look at it, it's not pertinent to this, this particular structure since it has been deemed a gas station.
And this is why it takes a village.
A gasoline station with a convenience store though?
But it's, no, it's a gasoline service, it was rezoned gas or re, gasoline service station, not a convenience store any longer. There isn't a, there isn't a gasoline service station slash convenience store. It's one or the other.
Oh, that's not the way it reads in the, in the appendix there with the, with the usage chart.
Unfortunately, this element is not subject to further interpretation. So it has to be the 35538E standards, not F.
Allison? I have, I have to agree with that. Allison, can we ask for your interpretation of that? Or Leah, I'm not sure who could. Anybody on mute?
Allison's muted, I think.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay. Well, I put you on the track pretty quick there.
No, it's an interesting question. I mean, I know that, you know, originally, the interpretation of the code enforcement officer was that this was a convenience store and that interpretation was overruled by the ZBA who ultimately determined that it qualified as a gasoline service station and was subject to the requirements of 355 38F, which is, you know, prompted the need to request the variances that we just obtained from the ZBA. I understand, I think the definition of gas service station indicates that you can have a convenience store, you know, as part of that use. But my recollection is that the determination was that it was a gasoline service station and so the requirements of 355E applied. I'd like to go back and review that, but that is my recollection. And so I would think that, you know, because that requirement is under subsection F applicable to convenience stores, that it wouldn't apply here. But I would like to go back and just, you know, review the ZBA's determination on that.
Yeah, and we don't, obviously, we don't want to put Allison on the spot here because this is sort of a new issue that has just come up, but it's true that the definition of gasoline service station can include a convenience store as well. But, you know, the location of our convenience store aspect of the project was subject to variances that it would not have otherwise been subject to because it was deemed a gasoline service station. So I think sort of the jumping off point is probably a right one, that, you know, even though there's a component of this, it's a convenience store, that the provisions specific to that use probably don't apply. And the provision subject to the gasoline service station use probably do. But we'll have time to take a closer look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll go back and review what the ZBA's determination was when it heard the appeal from the code enforcement officers determination on the proper use category. And, but, you know, it sounds as though, you know, if that requirement were applicable, which, you know, not saying right now that it is, it is likely something that could be addressed with some adjusting. But it may not be necessary if that requirement doesn't apply.
Thanks, Allison. Thank you, Leah. What's that, John?
Can I ask my question on the site work?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Chuck, on the streams, there's Gabyon's behind the Stewart's, there's Gabyon's behind Carol's. There's nothing behind your house that you're taking. there's nothing behind your house that you're taking down. And it's my feeling that you need to put Gabyons there because the erosion is, is bad, the, the bank is, is washing there and it isn't a flood plain. And with the trees down, how much, how long would it be before the, the roots are compromised and trouble starts? So I feel you should be, put the Gabyons between the two existing Gabyons that are already there.
Maybe on.
Um, I mean, I'll, I'll take a look, when I was there, the erosion didn't seem of, of that concern, I think, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but Brad, I think you were there more recently than I.
Yeah, the, I took note of that area in between the Gabyons. The reason there isn't Gabyons is because it has not failed to the extent that the sections that the Gabyons are at dictated to be. But the slope in between is relatively stable, the existing stumps, which I wish were full trees now, but the, they are maintaining the stability of the bank. I do think it needs bolstering. The one thing about a Gabyon wall is oftentimes that's also accompanied with fill within the, the flood plain. The flood plain is pretty narrow there, it's basically top of bank to top of bank for the most part. It winds out a little at Altamont Boulevard, but I was thinking more of a vegetative approach with some of the dogwoods, additional dogwoods up at the top of the bank, but bolstering it with vegetation because I didn't think the erosion was that bad. There's basically two small areas of erosion. There's the Stewart's Gabyon wall at the very beginning of that and at the very end of that, near that big dead Locust tree, there's a little bit of bank erosion there, not bad, not all that bad, though. So I was taking a greener approach.
Yeah, I mean, the, in the last letter we submitted, we don't have a problem taking down that, that large dead tree. It, it just has to be done in compliance with the Fish and Wildlife guidelines. So it would have to be done between November and April. So, I mean, I think that would, you know, remove Brad's concern. You know, Brad, if you want to meet onsite to just walk it and, you know, show the areas where you're concerned and then we'll address it with the plan change.
Debbie, I'm mute.
Good, thank you. I, I would like, though, Jeff's opinion on this, you know, and if you are going to walk that site, Brad and Chuck, I would like Jeff to go along with that.
I did walk it with Jeff.
You did?
Yes, about a week ago.
And that was the conclusions that you came to at the time?
Yes, pretty much so, the, you know, the, the Gabyon walls have been there for a while. The root systems of the stumps are working, but some stumps can die, some grow back and some die. But it's, that is Stewart's property, it's not Village property. They own approximately to the center of the stream, just like the people on the other side, the eastern side do. And, you know, being private property, they got to maintain it, so, you know, that's why we commented on the Locust tree and tried to identify a green approach towards stabilizing the portion of the stream bank that doesn't have a Gabyon wall.
Are there any DEC conflicts going into the stream bed? Do we have to worry about that at all?
It depends on how far you go down. Sometimes you do need a stream disturbance permit. If you're moving a tree up on top of the bank, generally not so much, but the, if it involves getting wet, then it involves a stream disturbance permit.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do you want to?
I add to that, you don't have to be in the water to actually need a DEC permit because if you touch the beds or banks of any regulated stream, DEC has jurisdiction under Article 15. So you should be careful what, what's dictated here because the Corps of Engineers and/or DEC could have jurisdiction. And from my experience, you can't go in and touch a stream just because you want to, you have to have good reason to do so.
That's correct, it kind of matters if you leave the stopper down, if you mess with the stuff, that's a bird of a different feather.
So if, if there is no erosion problem at the moment, the green approach, as being mentioned, might be the better solution.
Just, just something that, you know, I thought I had heard at some point in time that, you know, you've got to leave the stream beds alone or get some type of permit, so if we do that, not that it's a village issue, but just trying to put it out there.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other comments on that? Okay, what is, what are everyone's thoughts about the, the building facade? Chuck, can you put up the new plan again with the brick? Thank you. Now, I thought, I don't know who I had this conversation with, but is there, did you show at one point in time, or I don't know, maybe I'm imagining this, did you do a Victorian looking Stuart somewhere?
Sorry, I'm gonna, give me one second, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so I could look for the, the files.
You, you don't have to, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, we, um, in the town, in the, in the town of Brunswick, we raised a a building that was eligible for the Historic Register. And in part of our mitigation with SHIPPO, we had to do some, you know, fairly decorative work to match what that, that building was. And I, last, at the last meeting, I attempted to show that building and it didn't, I don't know if it was just got kind of caught in the, the weeds there for a moment. But if you like, I can, I can pull that building up.
Yeah, I just want a, a sense of comparison and, you know, at least that's what I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but, you know, I think, I, I looked at it online, it did look interesting, you know, at least for a sense of comparison. But in the meantime, what does everybody think, just to do something easy, brick versus cultured stone?
I like the, she's on mute.
No, go ahead, Barb, you're not on mute.
I like the stone idea better. I, there was something about the brick I thought was kind of jarring, I don't know, I, it was not my, would not be my first choice. And I would like to see the Victorian plans, I think a lot of people in the Village would be pleased to at least do maybe, maybe not what we have now, but maybe more Victorian.
Yeah, even if they could.
I'm done.
Next.
Oh, um.
Okay.
Ooh.
So.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
No. No.
I like the stone on the bottom and I like the, the carbons.
Yes.
And then the.
Oh, but the rest.
The, yeah, the clapboard and everything, I don't know.
No, it just, no, it, it's awkward, I, I don't, the design seems very strange on this. But I agree, I like the stone and I like the posts, but that's it. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to be rude.
That, that's why I wanted a sense of comparison, you know, as to what they could do and maybe just incorporate some of these features that we're seeing here.
Right.
What does everybody else think?
Picture also gives you context of what a, the, a light tan would look like.
Right.
Actually, yellow.
Yeah, that's more of a yellow, but. And then, is the roof the same, the slate gray roof, is that the same, Chuck?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
The roof line is different, correct?
Peak.
Well, there's no, so, so going back to, you know, going, do you now see your, the, the brick again?
No.
No. And the, the yellow, for me, is not a good color.
So, so the, the difference in, in this, so apparently when you, we, when you share your screen, you got to actually share the, the file. It's not like if I switch between files, I guess you don't see different things. But this, the building we're proposing in, in Altamont has an extended porch that wraps around the northeast and northwest elevations. So that's like, that's the main difference in the, the roof line of the two.
And you don't have carbons or, um, anything like that on this one, which you could do?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do the same thing in the gable from, you know, in the gable that was here, we could do the corbals, obviously, the, the porch is different because you have a full porch and you don't have this lower roof line. But yeah, we could do the corbals for, you know, easily.
Hey Chuck, the brick veneer proposed here, that's just on the porch on the outside or is it both on the inside? It's not the building? True?
True, it's just the porch on the outside.
So what would you have on the inside, hardy board?
Correct. Yep.
And then on the building, it's hardy board right down to the bottom?
Yep.
What is hardy board?
It's a concrete clapboard.
Siding.
So, so one of the things that, um, you could do or consider is to keep the porch, to go back to the stone, but instead of where the brick veneer is on the, the, the bottom of the porch, you could use fence, you know, gates.
Gates?
Like a, um. What?
Like a picket fence?
Uh, yeah, I was thinking, I wasn't thinking picket, but I was thinking the, you know, the aluminum fence that's made to look wrought iron.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Um, so that way you would see through the fence and, and into the veneer in the building, but still get that, that separation.
So that would eliminate the stone?
No, the stone would just go onto the building.
Ah, okay, oh, as opposed to the porch.
Yeah, so, so you would have the, the, you would see through the, you would see through the, the gate, as I'm calling it, into the, the building instead of having brick out, you know, out, out front.
So if you did, if you did that, at least for the others on the board, what would be the harm in having it white? Because you'd have the stone breaking up the white facade and, as well as the, the fence that Chuck's talking about, and then most of the buildings in Altamont are white. Most of the historic buildings.
The thing with having white, remember, is we're reflecting more light if it's, if it's white as opposed to a, a tan or, I mean, I know.
I know, but there's so little facade if the stone is on the building, there's so little white space.
Yeah, I mean, to kind of, to Dan's point, I mean, you, you're, you know, you're reflecting the light with the white, but the, the other side of it is, you know, you're, almost all of your light with a minimal, you know, soffit light on the Helderberg side, it's all going into the, into the corner. You know, there's somewhat minimal light outside, I mean, the, the biggest part of the light of the whole site is the canopy. And you, you know, you're not, you can't screen that because you can't, you're screening with vegetation on the corner, you can't screen it with siding or stone or anything else.
So then, everything would be white, the peak would be white, the, the, the gables.
Yeah, yep, 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 yep.
So where we have the tannish color now, what color then would the posts be, since you have white? Okay. Is there such thing as like an Adirondack stone, like, could there be a little bit, or like a, you know, I'm thinking like Helderberg bluestone, Adirondack stone, something like that, that would? I don't know.
That would be pretty.
Darker stone?
What's that?
So darker stone and then a lighter, than the, than the color building we're proposing, like the lighter building, as we call it?
Well, I mean, that, that's just my thought, putting it out there. Just something to try to tie the whole area in together. Yeah, I, I think we could make a mistake if we're trying to make it look what it isn't, you know, it's not a historic house, it's not an old house. I think you can add detail to make it fit in better, but I also think that having something that ties everything together would also add to the uniqueness of the historic district. If we could blend it all and, and not make it look like, you know, the old Johnny Cash song, "One Piece at a Time."
We talk about this historic district, but I'd also, I read the definition of the, of the Central Business District and we have a regular business district, but the purpose of the Central Business District is to promote the preservation and restoration of existing buildings, if we can, but also to, to use those buildings as a model for future development around the Central Business District. So, I mean, you've got the, the spinning room, the library, you've got Veronica's, you've got Bella Floor, you've got the funeral home, you've got Renew, Enterprise Building, several residences are all, they're not all the same, but, but I, I think you're right, that we don't want to just kind of piece it together. I'm not, I'm no good at design, but we want it to look like an, like a unique business in Altamont, not just, not just another Stewart's. So I don't know how we accomplish that.
Well, I thi, I think we're chipping away at it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Are we talking to the irregular size, somewhat round, but not stacked stone, cultured stone?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a good.
I am, I am too, Chuck. You know, the, the stone, um, the stone at Veronica's is nice, even though that is the cultured stone, but it, it's, it's got colors that make the color of the building pop.
So if you go with a gray stone or a blend. So if you go with a gray stone or blend of gray, why not make a light gray siding? Rather than the tan or something, then, then you don't have the white glow if you have the very light gray clapboard siding. Just an idea.
We could do dark gray with white trim, just like my house.
I mean, you know, there are a number, um, a- and I know Stewart's doesn't like to go dark, but the, if anybody's looked at the Elizabeth Town or the Lake Placid or Scroo- Scroon Lake, was it? Their buildings, I like them, but I like that look, so.
I would not recommend the, the brown and taupe, uh, color scheme. Um, I mean, you know, I've read some of the comments about what I'm proposing and, and that would be really far off. Um, so, so I'm good on not doing that.
Okay.
Um, but I think, I think I have some guidance on, on, you know, mixing some grays. So, just so we're, um, just so we're clear on the, the guidance that I have. Um, we're going to, um, do the, the veneer on the building. Um, that's gonna be a, a darker gray stone and then a, a grayish, uh, somewhat darker, but not dark building. Um, and then we're gonna add corbels to the, to the gables.
And then white trim?
Yeah, we already proposed like the white trim.
Okay, alright.
So.
The post would be white? The?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, um, everything would be white, I believe you have the building in front of you again?
Yep.
Yep, so the, the building, um, the columns would be white, all the trim would be white. Um, and then it would just be a gray stone and a grayish building.
Well, maybe a, maybe the stone could be, you know, a, a mix of colors that would complement each other. Like a blue, like a gray, like a dark gray, maybe some, I don't know.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna basically come down to what we can, what, what we can source in that scheme. I mean, I, I get the, the directive, I, I'll come as close as I can.
Chuck, sometimes I did this with my chimney, I had a large chimney to replace, it was brick before. And I had, uh, it was Coronado Stone was the manufacturer, but I had three different patterns. If you ever go through subdivisions and you see the cultured stone and it goes right up to the gable and you say, that looks fake. The reason is, is they stayed with one family of stone and there's only four patterns of stone. So out of that eight hundred stones that, uh, did their veneer, two hundred are all the same. You know what I'm saying? You, you, if you order a couple of different kits, uh, you know, you can, uh, match it up. I mixed some natural stone in with mine, I don't expect you guys to do that, but, uh, most people don't think it's cultured stone when it is.
I like, I like that idea. Um, you know, they tell you to do that with even flooring and stuff, you know, to mix different boxes so that you get a different effect. Everybody else is pretty quiet though.
Hey Chuck, uh, if, if you put the stone on a building, what are the columns gonna rest on? What is that porch wall gonna be now?
Um, they would be what I would call somewhat, uh, you know, standard Stewart's columns where they'll just come, you know, the length, they'll be full height columns. Um, and, um, there would be the fence in between them. So you would, you know, just land them on a, you know, concrete plate.
The fence that I think Chuck is referring to, I see it a lot in Colony, it's actually a requirement on frontage. But it's aluminum, like one inch square tubing with a top rail and a bottom. It's aluminum, but it's, uh, uh, powder coated black or whatever color you want, but oftentimes it's black, it gives a good offset to a, a lighter building color. Is that what you were talking about Chuck?
That's it.
Could we see?
You know, those one inch bars are on like, you know, five inch center or something like that.
It, it would be, be able to see a couple of drawings, a couple of options. Um, it's sort of hard to imagine.
You mean different colors and different?
Yeah, I mean, you're throwing out a lot of different.
Go ahead Dean.
I guess I'm just a little confused by what Brad was asking about. There is no fence that I can see in the drawings between the columns, is that what we're talking about?
Who's talking? Yeah, so, so Dean, what we're, what they're, they're, what we're trying to get is that they don't like the building I've proposed and they would like to switch it. So what I'm trying to do is get, um, get guidance on what, um, should, should replace the, um, what I've submitted.
Right, I just, the reason I'm asking is it seems odd per the plan to be putting fence between the columns, the way the parking is laid out. I'm just trying to understand what the intent of that is.
Well, it's just, I mean, there's no difference between fence between the columns than brick between the columns.
But your, your site plan currently doesn't show brick between the columns. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I oh, I apol- yeah, I'll get clarification, I thought that the, oh, there is a misinterpretation on my, on my end, I apologize. I thought that the porch had the veneer come out in the building. So I think Dean's right, um, and I'll get clarification of this, I apologize. Um, I think because the veneer matches the columns, there's no space between the columns now, is that what you're saying Dean? The space is open between the columns?
Right, I, I think that I think that each column has the brick or the stone.
Yeah, and I thought because it blended in, I.
And then beyond that.
Yeah, it's open.
Yeah, cause that note does show, it says the brick is wrapped around the building. Like the bottom of the columns, it's also.
Yeah, I, I thought that the, I'm apologizing, I thought that the porch, I thought the way we left it was the porch was going to have, so right now between these columns, it would essentially be open. And I was under the impression that the porch came out. Um, I'll get some clarification on that, I, I apologize, that's, that's an error on my part. Okay, I'll clarify that for the next meeting, I apologize. So I guess with, with that is, uh, I mean, does the board want it open or do you would prefer the, the fence?
I like it open.
Considering how your parking is, you would think it needs to be open so people can access the parking spaces and the entrance, otherwise they're all funnel down the center and they're out in the parking lot to get to their vehicle.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, that was actually the nature of my question.
Dean, thank you, I apologize for that.
So for a safety point, you, it seems like you'd be better off leaving it open.
Yeah.
But you could still put stone as shown here instead of the brick, you could put stone veneer on the building and stone around the base of the columns.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just, the, the, my coworker just texted me back, it is, uh, open, so I apologize for misrepresenting it. Um, but yeah, I could switch out the stone for the brick, that's not a problem. So Brad, to your point, it would rest the same way and just be stone, it wouldn't have to, the column wouldn't run full.
Right. At the base of the column, at the, uh, the pier, if you will, you see how you have a capital at the top? One of those, uh, trim type of things, uh, at, at the top of the column, can you have a similar type of thing at its base? Those are typically, are these fiberglass columns?
Uh, I'm pretty sure that they are. Again, I don't wanna misrepresent it now that I've been wrong, but I think there's some type of plastic, yeah.
Yeah, you got six along the front, it's, it's a simple thing, I got one downstairs and, uh, um, that would can kind of complete that look like you have at the top.
Yeah, that, that would look nice, Brad.
Column base.
And are we also doing then, I know we talked about this for brick, is there going to be stone at the base of the canopy where the pumps and everything are?
Um, it's not currently, but it, it can be, yeah, it can match.
Monument sign?
Well, not just the monuments, like see how he's gathered around the, the pumps with the brick? I think that, that should be stone if we're doing, everything should match, basically.
Yeah, so there's no stone proposed there now, but whatever we do at the building would match the, the si- the sign and the, the canopy. That, that much I, I, if you want, if you want the stone on the canopy, everything will match, it won't be different, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, my opinion, I don't know what everybody else thinks, I think that would.
I think that works and then include the, the dumpster enclosure as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now about the, the ballards in front of the store? Someone had mentioned making it similar to Altamont Corners and I think they're lit as opposed to just a, a black metal post.
What are the ballards?
What's, what's that?
It's, I might be pronouncing it wrong, is it the posts in front of the store?
It's a ball.
What?
They're these things.
Right.
A ballard.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what I thought they were, okay.
Oh, okay.
Being a drive-through.
Right.
Oh.
Because now we just have this metal post per, you know, proposed, correct?
Well, you had, I mean, this is exactly, um, what I'm showing you here is exactly, you know, what's proposed. Um, I mean, again, just grabbing kind of pictures as I can find them, but this isn't the, this isn't paved. Um, but it would be these gray, um, plastic sleeves. It's a steel tube that's filled with concrete.
Take a look at the ones at Altamont Corners, I think they're a little bit more ornate. They, they might tie in here, again, trying to, without, you know, piecemealing everything, tying in some things, um, with either Altamont Corners or Library of Veronica, I mean, we have a whole bunch of choices, you know. We could walk through this village, I walked through the village the other day and counted ten different styles, ten different architectural styles. So I'm like, okay, well, which style do we want them to match? So, you know, I, I think as long as we try to put a few things here and there without it being piecemeal. Again, we're, we're chipping away at it, I, I think we're getting there.
These are unattractive.
Yeah, these are, I agree. If you look at the ones at Altamont Corners, and I thought somebody had sent a picture and I don't know, I've got like seven thousand pieces of paper on my dining room table, so. It was, it was the same email that we got Chuck that, uh, addressed the dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, it was from Kristen Casey.
Was it from Kristen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mine are all downstairs.
Got some good ideas.
Yeah, I'm not, um, the only thing I'll say is I'm not, um, I'll, again, I'll, I'll see what we can do, but I'm not putting in illuminated, illuminated ballards.
Well, if it doesn't, maybe not illuminated, but maybe kind of dress up the top of that a bit. Again, you know, if, if you, you go, go over there tomorrow or whenever, take a look at the ones at Altamont Corners, just maybe you can just do something like that. And how tall are those posts Chuck? They look taller than the the building or than the wall.
I think they're five, I was gonna say about five feet, I'll, I'll, I don't think we have a detailed sheet attached to this, but I'll get a, I'll get you some information.
We're getting there.
Do we, um, we haven't really, really addressed the SWIP or anything like that. Um, Brad, have all your questions, uh, Stewart's answered all your questions, uh, regarding stormwater runoff?
Uh, I don't think so, but I don't think it would take much. Uh, hold on a sec. Yeah, the, uh, there's a couple of things I do wanna talk about, one of them is landscaping back over by the, the stream, but we, we can get to that. Chuck, the main feature of the stormwater management, is some storage piping underneath the canopy and going out towards the Altamont Boulevard entrance. Um, I had a comment about, uh, one part of it that was shallow. Um, there is gonna be some truck traffic on this site and I was a little concerned about the quality of the fill around those storage pipes. It is plastic pipe, so it usually gets some decent gravel both underneath it and around the sides. The use of excavated material there, I don't think is going to result in the, I think it's gonna result in a pipe that deflects over time and shows, shows its face on the surface pavement. I'd just like to see good fill around it.
Yeah, the, um, the note on S6 Brad has been changed to, um, include flowable fill.
Yeah, I see the note that you reproduced in your letter and it says when underground array has less than 1.5 feet of cover. And that addresses one part of my comment. But even that, that has two feet of cover, if it's got clayey existing material with no strength or little strength to it, the pipe is gonna be compromised. I just put gravel around it. It's, it's not perforated, we're not creating a conduit for fuel leakage to get anywhere.
Yeah, so what would you like the note to read?
Uh, crusher run, New York State DOT type two. Six inches under and, you know, up to, uh, maybe six inches over the pipe and then do whatever you're doing over that for your pavement. If you do that, I don't think you're gonna need the flowable fill, but the, stormwater management. Yeah, that's pretty much it on, uh, so far as, uh, there's a number of my, the comments from our May 12th letter that you responded to. on the, your 15th, uh, letter that I've got here. Some of these that, you know, you've indicated they're going to be addressed on a future submission and, you know, I'll look for those. But as far as a question for this group, that was it for the stormwater management. But I did want to talk about the landscaping plan over on the creek side of the store briefly. If somebody could pull up the landscape plan.
Good?
Good. Looking on the east side of the site towards the creek, now you've got the edge of the pavement there. And then in between, the fence is designated lawn area and there's three plantings proposed of trees there. And then there's this six, uh, dogwoods on the backside of the fence. It's the lawn area, what's labeled lawn area that I'd like to talk about. Instead of having that as a lawn area, the way it's currently landscaped, somebody went out there and spread some very nice mulch up against that fence, almost out to the pavement. I would convert quite a bit of that lawn area to a mulched planting bed. Have your three trees, throw in maybe two or three flowering type of shrubs, a couple of boulders. And now instead of a 10-minute mow job, you got a two-minute job and it looks like something. You've got, you're using the fence as a nice backdrop for some landscaping of interest. Cause right now it's just three trees and lawn and, you know, where does the lawn stop and the root systems of the tree take over? If you mulch right out to the canopy of those three trees and leave just a little strip of grass, you could put, that, that's where I was talking about putting maybe a bench or a picnic table. A lot of people like to eat lunch over there.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think I have a problem with the, the mulch. Um, and I know that the, the picnic area was, I think, over there. And then, um, when the trees came down between the store and 107, um, you know, the picnic table moved. I do struggle to, to, to put the picnic area or benches in between the parking area and the fence. I mean, that seems a little awkward to me. Especially when we're introducing picnic tables to the Helderberg side of the building. Um, so I, I don't think, you know, the, you know, that, that only between these two, these two trees would be the only appropriate spot, if at all. You know, because otherwise you're behind the dumpster and behind the propane.
I would agree with that. But some people, some people want to sit in the shade or be out in the sun, not under the porch. And that just provides in between those two trees, just like you said, there's your opportunity.
Could we maybe do a couple ladder on that chairs or something like that? Something smaller that doesn't take up so much room?
I mean, it's, it's literally right behind the bulk petroleum bulk storage.
Yeah, see that?
I mean, it's just like, I'm, I'm not trying to be defiant and I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, say, just say no, but it, it's just an awkward spot.
Those are buried tanks, right?
Yes, Brad, who has his four types of stone around his chimney. Those are buried tanks. What, I mean, you want a bench, like a bench, like, I, I mean, the most I think you could fit is a bench and now you're tapes and mulch everywhere.
Yeah, it's, I, I realize you got most of this under the porch, but there was some comments from, from others that, you know, and I don't think they were talking so much as a picnic table as a, a bench.
You know, I, I mean, I think that's something that it could be added if, if need be. I, I, it's hard to envision exactly where it would be or if anybody would want to sit there without actually seeing a completed project. So I don't know. I get what you're saying because that, that was one of my suggestions way back when is, you know, some more seating and bench areas that people could just hang out, even if people were just walking to just sit down and relax for a minute, but, um.
Hey, I got an idea. Instead of, um, where, where Dan had recommended removing the plantings along Altamont Boulevard, why don't we put two or three benches along there?
That, that could work because that could help walkers and things too.
Is there enough room there? Um, I don't know if people want to sit right next to the road.
Well, you're, I mean, you have a five-foot sidewalk.
Yeah.
And the 30 inches of plantings you'd be removing, I mean, could easily be replaced by a bench.
No, maybe.
I'd rather sit facing the road than sit facing the gasoline fueling.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Bents as it is.
Are you good, Brad?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not even sure you need more than one, but the, that whole length, I do, I would be supportive of some vegetation. I was just talking about, um, instead of all junipers, put a couple of different kinds in there. It's not a lot of space to work with though.
You're talking about along Altamont Boulevard area there?
Yeah, right, right, right here.
Yeah, there's 20 junipers, which is kind of monolithic. I was saying that, uh, maybe do 17 junipers and three of something else that is salt resistant, compact and colorful.
The problem, I think, that's, that's going to occur is you have gravel behind the curb, gravel backing it up. You have gravel under the sidewalk so that it, it appears to be about two and a half feet. By the time you get, you take out the area for the gravel underneath, you have very little soil left for any vegetation to actually grow. You could plant it. It'll look good in the first season and over time it's just going to dry, dry out and die. Because even the junipers, which will tolerate the condition better than most plants, that's a harsh environment right there. It's all pavement. There's no shade. There's nothing. I don't think the junipers will even survive there. So, that's why I suggest just go with complete pavement, but have the textured concrete on either side of the sidewalk like it is throughout Main Street and Maple Ave. And then you could always put a bench or two there that matches the benches that are throughout the village. When we re, when DOT redid Main Street and Maple Ave, there's some of the metal benches that, you know, are freestanding and nobody skateboards on them or whatever because of the way they're fashioned. Um, and they also match the lighting throughout the village, the ornamental lighting.
Yeah. So I, I think, um, I think that solves the kind of the screening and the use of that space issue in addition to Brad's desire for a bench somewhere that doesn't face the gas canopy as Chuck's condition. So the only outstanding item that I had that has not yet been addressed from Brad's letter or, or both letters was the cupola light.
All right.
Um, this was a pretty lengthy conversation at the zoning board. It was really determined to be more of a, a planning issue. And the, the board at that time had gone through a series of iterations of, you know, no light, light facing, you know, only northeast with the other two sides effectively shaded in, um, and, and no light. You know, there is access through an attic and that light can be placed on a timer. And this, you know, the same is kind of like the rest of the exterior lights. So, you know, from, from my perspective, the easiest and, you know, maintenance free is no light. But if you want it to, you know, to be lit, um, you know, we worked pretty hard to not have any light on the southern elevation. So I would think at a minimum you would want, you know, that side, call it blocked in. So I just need some, some guidance on that.
What does the board think? Unlike it with no light.
No light.
No light.
I have no preference.
You know, could go either way.
No light wins.
No light, yeah.
One if by land, two if by city.
All right. I was kind of thinking, gee, if we put just one of those little lights that look like candles in there, but then it was like, yeah, no. Chuck would have to get up there and change it and it's probably cobwebs and everything else up there, so.
Well, I'm going to be spending a lot of time on the bench with Brad. Changing li, light fixtures is, is second nature.
Are there the dormers? No, right?
Uh, same, actually the same thing. I mean, there can be lights in the dormers. You know, if you, if you like, yeah.
No, no, I, I just wanted to clarify.
No, that's a good question.
Yeah, again, tip, typically we don't unless, you know, we've worked in municipalities that have requested it. Some places want, you know, fully functioning second floors, which we, you know, don't, don't build. So they, they wanted to create that, that living space feel.
No lights.
Okay.
Now, one other question. I don't want to throw this out, but, or throw a wrench in everything, but the peak, does anybody prefer an eyebrow to the peak? Like Altamont Corners, think of Altamont Corners. It's got that eyebrow window in the roof as opposed to a peak.
Eyebrow window.
Think Altamont Corners.
Yep. Eyebrow window. This, this has kind of bothered me the whole time. I haven't really liked it, but hadn't heard any comments on it. But I think the eyebrow window would be pretty.
Again, I'm just trying to add elements from different buildings.
It's just the way it is.
You like it the way it is?
I think the way it is, what the details that Chuck was suggesting would work better.
I like, I like it the way it is myself. Um, I, I think it looks very nice.
Okay. All right, good. I'm just trying to hammer things out here. Um, all right, um. Does anybody have anything else? I, I, I know there was a bunch of questions and suggestions that were emails and letters from the public. From what I can see, Stuart's, there were a bunch of questions asked that Stuart's addressed. I, I don't think it's necessary to go through each and every one of those.
Deb, this kind?
Yes.
Can we talk about noise and decibel levels?
Absolutely. Yeah, that was going to be my, my next.
Okay.
If everybody's good with what we've said about the building, um, then I had sent, um, we can move to the noise and decibel levels. And I had sent an email probably around five o'clock or so to the board, what Brad sent to me. And it addressed the decibel level, levels from the condensers. I don't, and it had YouTube. It was actually pretty good. Did, did everybody get a chance to see that?
I did, Deb. I, I saw it.
So my question for Chuck is, so there, there's four units, right? There's two condensers and two HVAC units. And I saw the details of the decibels on the condensers. Do we have the, what are the decibels on the HVAC units?
Um, I was under the impression that that was provided in the, um, May 2nd or May 4th submission.
Okay, I may have missed it, but.
I'm looking it up. The condensing unit, the cooling condensing unit is 58 decibels.
Yeah.
And the freezer condensing unit is 53.
And how, what does that compare to in layman's terms?
58 decibels is like a window air conditioner.
Okay, so that's kind of what you said in your email. And that would be outside on, on blocked by anything?
That's, yes, that's standing close to it outside. I didn't get any information on the HVAC unit. I don't know if Chuck has, we requested that information. Just the freezer condensing and the cooler condensing units. And less than 60, you know, that's, that's not too bad.
Did you see any of the emails, um, that Carol sent from the people that lived around the Duane'sburg, Stuart's? Uh, state, stating that because of the air conditioning, they can't sleep at night. They've had to move their bedroom and, I mean, does any of that, I, I'm not questioning that whether it's true or not, but, um.
I didn't see those emails, no.
Okay.
Um, I saw the email from the neighbor in the Troy situation, not, not Duane'sburg.
Thought there was one from Duane'sburg. It might've been the Troy one.
Yeah.
And are they the same levels, Chuck?
Um, no, the, the HVAC units have been switched out. But that, um, and, and the HVAC cut sheets are, are not provided, but I'll, I'll make them provided. If you look at the site plan for the, the Troy situation and the situation in, in Altamont, the Troy neighbor's property, first of all, is zone B2, so she's actually a non-conforming use in the zone. Secondly, that's the corner of 112th Street and Second Avenue in Troy. So the ambient noise is in the 60 decibel range with the, the traffic that passes there, roughly 12,000 cars. But the big difference is that she's 12 feet off the back of the store and approximately, you know, 10 feet or nine and a half feet off the back of the condenser with only a, a fence and some sound blankets between them. The situation we're proposing in Altamont has the, um, the, the freezer condenser units and the two HVAC units surrounded by a fence and then approximately 20 feet between the fence and, and Carol's property. So the sound situation is considerably different, not, not even, you know, different.
Okay, that, well, that, that, you know, and that, thank you for addressing that in that way because, you know, I was trying to in my mind say, all right, well, she's X amount of feet and she's X amount of feet. That's kind of close, but, um, yeah, and I'm just trying to, you know, be, be the devil's advocate here as far as, um, the noise levels and what a condenser, you know, puts out.
So I guess I'm confused on the, the 20 feet. So I guess I'm confused on the the twenty feet. I thought the back of the building was twenty feet from Carol's property. So then then you've got the units, then you've got the fence. So is that twenty from the front to, from the fence to her property, correct?
From the, from the back of the um, compressor or from the back of the freezer condenser to the fence. Alright, so from the back of the freezer condenser to the fence is is six feet and then it's approximately fifteen feet to the fence.
Sixteen feet is is from where, Chuck?
Um, hold on one second. So you have from the back of the freezer condenser to the retaining wall fence is five, six feet.
Okay.
From the back of the condenser to the fence atop the retaining wall is fifteen feet. And if you measure to the corner of Carol's house from the back of that unit, it's fifty feet. Um, but again, you have to remember for, now, this is just the condenser. The condenser is at an elevation of four seventy point five. The retaining wall is is three to four feet in that proximity. So the retaining wall is higher than the top of the condensing unit. And then you have the eight-foot fence atop that. So for, that's for the condensing, that's for the condensing unit. Um, the the bards obviously sit slightly higher on the wall.
And their decibel output in comparison?
Um, they're, you know, in the effective same range, I mean, they're probably slightly higher. Um, but you know, they are the quiet line system. I I'll get cut sheets over to to everyone.
Okay. Anyone else have anything, any of the questions? Perhaps or concerns that the residents or the public uh, sent us emails on that anybody on the board wants to bring up that hasn't been addressed in some way, shape or form?
I have one more.
Okay.
Um, we've seen the the vehicle circulation plan within the the property. Is there a way to demonstrate that there's adequate and safe pedestrian circulation within the site? It's a, it's a long walk from the pump to the store. In fact, it's, I believe it's farther from the pump to the store than it is to cross Route one fifty-six. And even from the pump back out to the curb is is like forty feet.
Yeah, we, that that was a question that I had raised too. I I know the speed bumps, that type of things are out, um. Chuck, has that been a, D- DOT, um, we've got their documentation. Did DOT uh, review the lot um, configuration as well?
Um, they typically don't. Um, they they look at the truck circulation routing. Um, and the driveway locations to make sure that they're, you know, generally in agreement with the access configuration and then the the separations. Um, again, all of of those kind of meet the standard. I'm sure there's some small detail type things like radii that need to be addressed. Um, but ultimately, per the email I forwarded to you and Brad, um, there's, there's nothing at this level that DOT is, you know, expecting from us to change.
That was the one from Tina?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is a painted crosswalk from the pumps to the front of the store conceivable to kind of containerize the pedestrians so they aren't all over the place? Does that make any sense?
I I mean, I personally don't think it makes any sense to do anything other than what we're proposing. I mean, it's thirty feet from the 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 canopy to, um, the the back of parking. Um, you know, we don't try and delineate pedestrian movement through there because, you know, ultimately, if a pedestrian comes into the site, you want them to use the perimeter sidewalk and and enter off Helderberg Ave. I mean, that's, you know, effectively, that's why your zoning pushes buildings to the street the way it, the way it does.
Yeah, the crosswalk I was talking about was just essentially dedicated for people gassing up that they, okay, this is my path to get to the store so I don't become a hoarder, hoarder in it. Um, just giving some structure to the uh, payment, but yeah, that distance is not all that atypical.
So if people are walking up Altamont Boulevard and coming to the store, they're gonna come in that entrance and they're gonna make a beeline for the store. They're not gonna walk down to the corner and turn left up Helderberg to follow the sidewalk. I mean, I, you you'd like to think people would do that, but, um, uh, I I think pedestrians tend to walk in a straight line.
Yeah, but even like, even if you're saying that, does the crosswalk you're recommending from the canopy to the store wouldn't address that concern because they would comment effectively at an angle. Um.
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
I mean, if if they put in a painted crosswalk, even though it would delineate the area for pedestrians, wouldn't a painted crosswalk wear off fairly quickly because of all the turning movements? And in a parking lot like that with everybody backing in and out and moving around?
If people kind of walk where they want to anyway, um, yes.
Right.
And yes.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of crosswalks and textured crosswalks and stuff, but there are limitations to the surfaces and what will actually stay there, you know?
Could we do some type of, I don't want to say brick, but some type of, well, maybe I I would want to tie it in, but something else that would delineate perhaps a crosswalk, but if it were a brick without interfering with plowing, um, also tie into the building?
You have to be careful of ADA requirements with crosswalks that have any texture to them whatsoever.
Yeah. Right, and that, and and I was gonna say, that's my problem with introducing like, it'd be nice to have, um, to to Connie's point, like a sidewalk along the outside edge, but you're, you know, you'd lose all your landscaping on that side.
It it's just a concern, you know, it's one of the factors for consideration, uh, while we're reviewing this up is pedestrian um, access and safety.
Would Brad, do you think, what does the elimination of one of the driveways on Altamont Boulevard?
That's not an option.
No, I mean, we've already eliminated one driveway from the existing condition. I mean, that in itself is that, you know, and in, I I would, I mean, I would assume it's an improvement on the overall site circulation and kind of, you know, um, I mean, it creates, I think, less opportunity for interaction between, you know, vehicles entering and exiting the parking lot and pedestrians who may be coming in to cross the parking lot to get to the store.
Yeah, sometimes what's there now is actually one choice too many. It kind of is parking like in the Wild West. Um, Helderberg Ave, it was pretty much the same, but having a larger width entrance and just one of them and one fifty-six controls the movements quite a bit more.
The other thing is that you currently, the store has no, you know, call it, it's, the store in its current capacity is an island that everyone has to cross from all sides to get. Um, and there's access around, you know, all um, four sides of the building. Um, so here you you really have the activity concentrated between the two streets and the store. Um, so I apologize, Allison, for, I thought you were recommending closing the Altamont driveway, not, um, the fact that we already did close one of the Altamont driveways.
No, no, I was just thinking of, you know, what's there now compared to what's proposed, and it seemed like, you know, that's, you know, I mean, as a layman, it would seem that would, you know, be an improvement as far as, you know, reducing the level of potential, you know, interaction from vehicles entering and exiting the parking lot and pedestrians trying to cross the parking lot.
No, I think what ultimately would be nicer, I mean, would be nicest is if you could, you know, put a sidewalk along the, you know, kind of the creek side. But I think you get into some, you lose some landscaping, you deal with some grading, and you have to have an ADA compliant sidewalk. I just don't think there's room there to do it.
Well, I mean, I, you know, at some point, you know, I I I mean, I I walk or jog just about every day and, you know, you you learn as a pedestrian that people, I I I always just go by the plan that nobody sees me. So, you know, nobody stops through the crosswalks around here. I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, but nobody stops. Um, a- and I do think that, you know, we'll do everything we can to assure pedestrian safety, but there's also a level of consciousness that the pedestrians have to show as well.
Well stated.
Chuck, I appreciate your patience in answering all these questions and your your willingness to delve into things. I I I do appreciate it.
Thank you. I am, my review is in December. I accept letters anytime.
And and only, you know, summer's coming, so free ice cream would help to help. Um, but, you know, to, just to try to uh, wrap things up for tonight at least, um, I think as a board, we've got a lot to digest in the next couple of weeks. Um, you know, uh, if we look at section three thirty-five, thirty-six, um, of our our zoning code, you know, site plan approval, I think if we go through each and every one of those factors, although a lot of them have been, um, considered and answered in the negative declaration, that doesn't mean that we don't have to look at it. So I think if we take everything that we've heard tonight and go through those factors and answer them in the best and most honest way that we can, um, I think we, the next meeting, if we could set for uh, the twenty-sixth of this month of May and perhaps move toward some type of resolution and decision. Uh, I'm not trying to hurry things along. If if we don't get there, we don't get there. Um, but we've learned a lot tonight. Um, a lot of questions have been answered, a lot of the questions remain. I know Chuck, you're taking away a few things. Uh, there's the question about gasoline service station versus convenience store. Um, but I I, for my own benefit, I I feel that we've gotten as many questions as we could answer tonight. Uh, I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
I think it's been very useful.
The biggest, you know, it's what, again, going back to walking up uh, Main Street, what's it going to look like at eight, nine o'clock at night? Is it gonna look like a spotlight in the middle of forty watt bulbs all around? Is it gonna stand out? Uh, that's my big concern, and anything that Stewarts can do to give us an idea of just how different that lot is going to look like, the the whole site as compared to the surrounding area is gonna help me make my decision.
Chuck, could you get it, uh, you know, without having to drive all the way up to Charlton? Um, could you get a picture perhaps of the Charlton site at night?
Well, it's funny you should mention that, um, because I have to go to my camp tonight and I will, um, go that way.
I mean, that that might help, um, give us an idea of what it'll look like.
Why weren't we invited?
Now, Chuck, you said you were gonna.
I'm spending too much time taking, um, the stone from Brad's chimney or um, columns, you know?
Allison, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, I think Chuck had mentioned before that, you know, he would try and see if he could get like a, I think it was a photometric display to show kind of that color picture like we had for the ZBA, but, you know, for, um, you know, the new configuration. I was wondering, would that also take into account if you took the light posts at the entrances and replace them with those, the decorative light posts that I think, you know, the the lights enclosed in a globe, would that, if you did that photometric, would that be reflected in that visual?
Yeah, I'm trying, um, I'm trying to, um, share my screen here and, you know, it it doesn't, um.
Because it sounded like when you were describing that.
I think this is kind of what, if you could see the the right hand of my, I keep trying to zoom in to give you a better, like, something like that. That's, I mean, that's kind of what I, I think you guys are looking for. Um, is where is the light gonna be? I mean, you could see the property boundary, um, highlighted on the corner here. Um, you could see the the freestanding sign. I mean, but it's effectively dark and 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 that goes to my point earlier. If you're looking in from from a place that's dark or even less lit, um, it's going to, you know, be, for lack of a better term, bright. Um, so that's, you know, I don't know, other than this view, I don't know how else to show it.
But with the decorative street lights you had talked about, that?
Yeah, so so that would affect.
On like street level.
Yeah, so that would affect, the the decorative fixtures would affect light and, um, if you go back to the the larger, you know, image, the the decorative fixtures would, um, affect the lights in in this corner, um, and in and in this corner. Um, and you gotta remember, the plan hasn't been developed since we relocated the dumpster. So you're effectively drawing a line, you know, at the edge of the store and bringing it toward the creek. Um, that would eliminate the light. Um, so, yeah, I think.
Either way, the the illustration, either one, doesn't really put it in perspective to the setting because there's lights at Altamont Corners, there's lighting at along the, around the intersection, there's a light at the other service station.
So like the lighting at the, at the entrances is, you know, in keeping with what's kind of existing on the street now, you know, really, you're you're, you know, as you had said, you know, you're kind of, you know, your only place where you have those, you know, the more intensive lighting is at the store and the gas island. I mean, it, you know, I see, you know, the desire to kind of see what that would look like from a distance, but I would think, you know, it would take into account, you know, the existing lighting on the street and, you know, the the lighting that. it would take into account, you know, the existing lighting on the street and, you know, the lighting that you're gonna have at the entrances to the store. That would all kind of be consistent with what's in the area right now. And then, you know, you had that visual where it kind of showed the difference between, you know, 3,000 and 4,000. Would that change just at the store and the gas station really create that much of a difference?
That's kind of my point. I mean, I, I, even the change in the light from three to four, I don't know, I don't, I personally don't believe it changes this intensity map. Because they put out, I would imagine, a similar range of Kelvin, so the intense, or a similar range of foot candles. So the intensity is going to be the same, it's going to be somewhat similar, and it's, I think, in the intensity map. So to kind of go into Dan's point, I don't know how to model, you know, the lights at Altamont Corners, the lights, the villages lights, the DOT lights, and that, that person looking up the hill perspective, that's definitely what I'm struggling with.
Right, I mean, to just sort of jump in, I think we're not really saying, no, we're not willing to do this. We're just not really clear on how we could go ahead and put a model together that would be, you know, accurate and to show you what you want to see.
On this photometric you've got right here, if you eliminated the light at the dumpster, which isn't there anymore, and then, I don't know, if you took into account the two light posts at the entrances, would this, you know, would this ball of light, you know, at the two entrances be reduced, you know, would just a new photo sim, you know, of this just showing the changes that you're making, you know, at least we could then see the difference of what this visual is compared to the, well, after you make the changes that we discussed tonight.
Yeah, and then I think that the only...
Same thing, but at least it's a comparison of, you know, the changes.
And that's what I was saying with this perspective versus the kind of the temperature. Because if you look at the top right or what I'm hovering my mouse around now, that's a view, you know, effectively looking in to the store, into the site from the view people have alluded to about coming up the hill. I just don't think I can simulate a, you know, a six-foot person looking into the site view. I mean, I think the modeling is kind of this way.
Yeah, and I don't think that's a problem, you know, it's, and this is the first I'm seeing this view, is it, what does it look like from down the street? And this is somewhat helpful.
And I think, I think seeing his actual picture from the other store might, might give us that.
Oh, yeah, that's the real world, you know, with, in a village setting, you know, there's lights and other things going on, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's the part I can't incorporate into our model. Just like with the sound, you know, the cut sheets will indicate a decibel level, but they won't take into account the three to four foot of retaining wall and the elevation change.
So is the board looking for a revised photometric plan, this blue plan that Chuck is hovering on now with the change of lighting in the dumpster location?
Yes.
I think I would like to see that, yeah.
Yeah, now, like...
I'm not saying that you have to redo the whole, you know, plot or every plan or anything like that.
No, 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 I, yeah, and I understand, I don't have, I think I just need the guidance, though. So this is like, this is a temperature, I'm assuming that it outputs both maps, but this is a temperature rating, and this is kind of the view of, you know, a similar thing, but kind of the view into the store. Is, are these what you're, something in this range is what you're looking for?
Chuck, is it possible to give, I mean, how you have that brightness around the store and around the island, is it possible to give that view from the railroad tracks?
Really, just so?
No, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the problem. I mean, the limitations are, I can only model to the extent the soft, you know, the software allows. And I can't, and I can't, because once you, I can only put in the fixtures that we have the information for. I can't put in any other information, you know, any streetlights, which I think there's a streetlight on the Hildeberg side of our store that's not incorporated in this lighting plan. So those things can't be taken into account because I don't have the information. I can't build that model.
There's also a street tree or two in the way, if you're walking up the sidewalk, that would block the view of the lighting from the, on the east side, anyway. I think going and looking at the Charlton site is probably the more realistic way.
So speaking of free ice cream, I'll be there after this meeting ends, plus about a half hour.
Hey, Deb, this is Steve. I can't emphasize enough, I've driven by that store and been there many, many times. You really need to go see it. You can look at all the pictures you want in the world, but until you've seen an actual with a canopy and everything, the way it looks, I think it'll give everybody a different perception. Now, the problem is, obviously, it's not around the corner. You may have to take a little trip at nighttime, but I really would recommend everybody do that before our next meeting.
And I, and I think if you, if you do go up there, if you continue your journey and stay on 147 and just head, you know, slightly north, you get to the corner of 147 and 29, and on the northwest corner, there's another Stewart's. And at that Stewart's, I believe, they use the 5700 lights.
Okay.
Chuck, the address, I thought you said it was 147 and 57.
Yeah, there's 147 and 67 in the town of Charlton, and then there's 147 and 29 in the town of Galway.
147, what was the last one in Galway?
147 and 29. Just keep going north on 147 till you get to 29.
Thank you.
Just take some pictures, Chuck. All right.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
There's no more questions. I make a motion that we adjourn till the next meeting. My legs are getting numb.
I have a question. It'll be like tonight's meeting, right, with no comments, no?
Correct. It'll just, it'll just, and that, you know, this will be my neck, my motion next, but it'll just be a meeting to continue this discussion, yes. There will be no public comment.
Now, Deb, I have a question, and maybe it's a question for Ginger. Would this be a special meeting that you guys are gonna schedule tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we have enough information back from Stewart's. I know that the design plans, we talked about a lot of changes along with a handful of other things.
Yeah, we don't think a meeting on the 26th will provide us enough time, if that was the board's thought.
Yeah.
Chuck, what would be feasible, then? Our next meeting would be the fourth Monday in June. I don't know.
No, leave it. I think I can turn plans around.
What about June 8th, or June 8th? That'll give you, like, three weeks. No, it gets you two weeks.
Yeah, I mean...
Need more?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at some of the, like, kind of the substantial nature of the plans.
Chuck, I'm not, we're not asking you to produce these huge plans again, you know.
I don't, I don't actually draw them. I just have someone draw them. So I am usually, you know, not popular in my office, anyway.
Yeah, we have a number of comments that we want to see Chuck do with the next submission. It can be done for that next submission. If you went to June 8th, you'd have a little more time.
Let's do that. I mean, that just seems more reasonable.
Okay, so it's 6:00.
But that's still a special meeting, correct?
That is a special meeting, correct.
It would still be a special meeting, yes. Ginger, do you know of anything else, is there anything else on the Village calendar for that night that might interfere with this meeting? Do you know offhand? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
What's that night again, Deb?
Whoa, hang on a second, John.
I don't know for positive, but it's keeping it on a Monday, so normally that's fine. It doesn't interfere with, like, the Village Board or if there was a zoning board meeting. So I think that would be all right. I'll be in the office tomorrow. I can check on that and get back to you, let you know for sure.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I don't see a problem with it. I just want to make sure that there wasn't some special meeting from something else that was planned. Chuck, are you okay with June 8th?
Yeah.
The rest of the board, are we all okay with June 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then, like to make a motion to continue, to set a special meeting to continue the special use permit for Stewart's on June 8th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Again, this will be a meeting and not a hearing. The public will not be allowed to speak.
I made that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go down a real quick here. So, Board Member Hyuki?
Approve.
Board Member Caruso?
In favor.
Board Member Rue?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hex?
In favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I think that concludes our Stewart's business for tonight. Ginger?
Deb, I just have one quick question for you. On the Stewart's review, you mentioned we were gonna, we should look at 35536, the site plan approval factors for consideration, but there's also a special use permit, 35535, that also has factors for consideration. Should we be looking at both?
I would certainly recommend any factors for some consideration. There's also 35520, which deals with the building layout and plan and facade and everything else. I've been going through that one, and, you know, as I do, I just check it off and say, did we do this? Was this addressed? Are we doing the best possible plan here? And, you know, once we have all that, and we'll put it all together and see what we come up with.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
35520, I'm sorry, you said 35520?
35520 is the other one that I was looking at, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I just had a quick question. I'm sorry to interrupt. It sounded like the resolution setting the next meeting date was specific just to special use permit. Is it the board's intention to also be reviewing site plan as well?
Oh, yeah. Well, yes, you know.
Yeah, I assumed so. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, yeah, it's just continuing this particular meeting, basically.
Yep, that's what I thought.
So just for the board's benefit, you know, when we go through, you know, the actual, our zoning law contemplates that when you have a special use that requires both special use permit and site plan approval, that it would be this integrated review where you would be looking at it, you know, as a whole at the same time. But when it comes time to our decision-making, we will be looking at the specific factors that are in our zoning law that we're supposed to look at for granting a special use permit, and also the specific considerations that we're supposed to go through when looking at a site plan approval. So there, there will be, you know, we are looking at both those sections and also the specific design characteristics that Deb had mentioned. So we're gonna be going through all that, and then our decision-making document will reflect the fact that we looked at all of those factors and considerations that are in each of those sections of our zoning law.
Thanks, Allison. Okay, so Ginger, I don't think we had the minutes available yet, right? I mean, I can understand that.
Now, we have, the transcript came in this past week, but it's very lengthy, and so we should be able to have that for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fair, fair enough. Anything else that anyone wants to discuss?
Do we need a second on the motion?
Which one?
The one we just made.
We did.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. I have one question for Lance, if he's still on. Lance, did you leave?
Oh, he's there.
Right there.
Lance?
Got to unmute himself.
Lance, I have a question for you, and everybody else can leave if they want. What's the status of the Bozenkill development? They're coming up on a good year. Is anything in escrow for them yet, for the sidewalks? What's the status on that?
I spoke with, did you hear Deb? Deb?
Yep.
Okay. I spoke with the engineer with ABD just last week, and I said, I said, what's the story? Because I'm dealing with a sand company in town in Scotland. And I said, yeah, I think he's running out of time. And he said, what he told me, Deb, was that he was going to inquire, but apparently the client had some financial setbacks, and he's gonna look into it.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Yep.
Yep, good, okay. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to... Okay, thank you.
But I thought about, about two weeks ago, so I called him.
Okay.
Because I told him, he's gonna have to go through all the procedures again.
Yeah, because otherwise, I know you said you gave him a six-month extension, and, you know, so that's... That'll be a year pretty soon, so...
Yes, it will.
He'd have, he'd have to come back before us if...
It was a year in July.
Right. Okay, so, that being said, if no one has anything else, I don't want to cut anybody off. I'll give you one more chance to say something.
Oh, come on, you gotta cut it off.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Okay, Board Member Hyuki?
John?
Yes, I'm ready. Yes, approve.
Madam Chairperson, Board Member Caruso?
In favor, sorry.
Board Member Rue?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
Definitely in favor.
Chairperson Hex?
In favor.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for hanging in there. It was a long one.
It was a good one.
Thank you, everybody.
Great job.
Nighty night.
Good night.